Tell me to order, please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the party of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let the record show that all board members are present and we will move on to our student showcase of spring commendations, Superintendent Hart.
Thank you, Board. On behalf of Princeton Public Schools, I'm proud to be able to welcome and present some of our finest student athletes and finest student activity folks to represent us on the biggest stage. Princeton Public Schools and the Board many years ago made it a goal to find more ways to recognize our students and to thank them for their hard work and dedication and perseverance. And we recognize that all of you are not here today without all of those things. And you represent all of the things that make Princeton Public Schools great and the community of Princeton great. You had to sacrifice and get over many hurdles and obstacles to be able to compete at that state level. And for that, again, we thank you. Is there any board members that would like to say anything before we begin our presentation?
Good work.
Good job.
And you know, it's really exciting too because this is about as full of a boardroom as we've had and you know, that speaks volumes to the strong work that our Board does, but also, you know, it's great to have people come and see what happens and how we govern our schools. So, thank you all for coming and we recognize that, hey, I tell you what, it's a beautiful night in June and you all took the time to get here. You know, we are an organization of student learning. That is, of course, what our goals are, to help you reach your potential as individuals and our mission. And we look at your activities outside of school as an extension of that student learning day and the skills that you acquire through your participation will help you in all of the endeavors that you have in your life. So, again, thank you. Tonight, we're going to be recognizing archery. We're going to be recognizing track and field, golf, and robotics, okay? And as tradition would have it, we always like to ask our coaches to come up and help read out the names and then we'll have, we try our best to have a little bit of an assembly line where you can come up, get your certificate, and the Board members really do like the opportunity to shake your hand and thank you individually. And then we'll try and get each group together for a quick picture before some of you may need to leave and then we'll bring our next group up. So, why don't we start with one of our largest groups here, and that's Vex Robotics. Can we have a coach representative or two, please, come forward? Coach, would you like to say any words about the season?
It's split in high school and middle school. Are they alphabetized?
You want to go next and have an opportunity to...
No, that's okay.
Okay, you'll figure it out.
Yeah. Just, it's been a really great season this year. We had, gosh, I don't even know, how many teams did we go to state with? Five or six between high school and middle school?
Yep.
Two teams go to Create and three teams go to Worlds this year. So, Create's our US Open in Iowa and Worlds was in Dallas, Texas this year. So, one high school team, two middle school teams, two Worlds, one of each to Create and a bunch to State. So, I'll let you, that's one of yours.
Yep.
So, when, folks, when they call your name, if you'd come up, you'd shake hands? Oh, no. How about you come over on this side?
Whatever you said.
No. Come over on this side. They'll shake your hands, get their certificate, and then they'll go around this way. And just because we won't have enough room for everyone to stay up right away, you'll kind of go back to your seat and then we'll bring you back up for a picture, okay? And I'm going to just be the photographer and try and get some good shots.
Yeah.
This is, this is split.
Okay.
Student on...
Landon was just first.
Oh, okay.
Do you want to go from Zoom?
Sure. So, we'll do high school first. Luke Bordeaux. Eric Oss. Christian Shaw.
Good job.
Nick Andrews. Oscar Hyman. And our last two I know aren't here, Beau Jeffers and Bella Whitworth.
Congratulations.
Middle school, Landon Actelak. Peter Bordeaux. Rachel Brockhaus. TJ Bridgen. Oliver Robertu. Sophia Whitworth. John Flick. William Brockhaus. Nathan Hill. Thea Rudine. Carter Thompson. Carter Ballser. Garen Gupta. Grant Offling. Brody Peterson. Blake Greneer. Josiah Kikefer. Logan Poole. Alexander Rumanyoli. Colton Raymond.
That's the one on Zoom. Poole, did you see?
Yep.
Emily, can you show, can you show him on Zoom so people can at least see him?
Michael Burholz. Addison Loom. Yeah.
Congratulations.
Brody Hunt.
Congratulations.
Oh, wait a minute. Carter Jensen. I have IQ in here too. Is John here?
John's not here.
Chase Gan. These are all IQ. Bryce Asby. Charlotte Roll. Isaiah Hoskins. And I think that's it. That's it.
And for our participant out in Zoom world, I hope you can see us. We're having trouble seeing you, but we are here with you in spirit. Could we have the high school group come up first for a quick picture if you'll just indulge us? And then the middle school team quickly follow them. And parents, guardians, please take pictures. And yeah, we'll have the board members right with them.
The camera's in front of Luke's head. Stand off.
Yeah, I, yeah, we might have to have some of you, yeah, keep doing that, Don. Come on, let's get board members out in front.
Let's start.
You two got to come back up front too. We'll let the two Ericks be in the back.
Great, great.
All right, everyone good with pictures? All right, thanks, high school team. Congratulations. All right, let's have our middle school group come up.
Where you can take this spot. I could take this spot. And then not give it back to them.
Yeah.
Don't smile, kid.
What was the song we were singing at Worlds? What was it?
Now he won't let go.
All right, let's give them a round of applause. How about we move into, we'll do a little smaller group now. How about we do our track and field state participants. Coach, would you like to come up and present? And Coach, if you'd take an opportunity to maybe share a few words on the season.
All right, well, it was a great season and we had one of our largest groups down to the state meet in quite some time. I don't see a whole lot of them here, but I will go through. Let me rearrange them. First, I would like, we had a four by 400 relay team make it to the state meet. And the participants in that were Joan Abiding, Nathan Mikesel, Peyton Dokken, and since we got in order, Adam Schrader, and also Preston Senney. I have said, well, it's four by 400, you named five people because you can have alternates. And we actually used an alternate at the state meet because we kind of saved one of our runners for the open 400, Joan Abiding. So, we ran Preston Senney in there too. So, we should give him the certificate, I think, also.
Okay.
And they did a great job. And once again, thanks for recognizing all of these people here today. And like you said, it's kind of the pinnacle, what people strive for. And I think it is important to recognize them for what they've done. So, that was our four by four relay team. We also had a hurdler, Lily Conig. I don't see her out there either. She advanced to the state meet. And our pole vaulter, Kate and Miller, he advanced to the state meet. But I talked a little bit about Joan Abiding. He was on the relay team, but he also made it in the open 400 and he ended up getting all states because he placed fourth in the 400. And we do have one person here, Kylie Noble. Come on up, Kylie. Kylie made it in the high jump and she placed runner-up at the state meet. So, she also got an all-state award. Congratulations.
So, you get a picture all by yourself? Coach, why don't we get you in there too? All right, congratulations. Yeah, yeah, Emily, that's out of the realm. Thank you, Coach. All right, well, let's move on to archery. And I know we have coaches here for archery. We'd love to have you come up here and give your prepared speech to everyone. You want to share some words about your season?
So, this season, we pretty much doubled our team inside from COVID. So, that is a super plus. The cool thing about it is, we did actually super great. We actually had the state champion come from our school. And then they went out to win nationals. They won, then they continued on and moved on to Worlds and they took home a total of $8,000 in scholarship money. And that's from Princeton kids. So, high school team did excellent. They did second place, I believe, as a team. We had a first-time individual elementary student. She can start at fourth grade. First year there, she took second place in 3D and fourth place in bullseye.
What am I missing?
We had a couple of middle schoolers also place. And we also had one of our second-year high school males go all the way to Sandy, Utah, and all the way to Worlds. So, that was really impressive. We did, we took a really big step back into the swing of things and taken the lead again this year in archery. So, very impressive and they did very well. And for one of our seniors, it's, this was one of our largest graduating senior class. A lot of them had actually started when third grade was still legal. So, we had one of the largest graduating class. And so, some of these kids have been in archery since third grade. So, that's pretty cool. Little mama. So, first off, I know a lot of them couldn't make it tonight because of work. So, Valley Elderman is here. Okay, Emma Elkair, come on up. Next, we have Jessica Anderson. Hayden Blood. Okay, Luke Bordeaux, come on up. Randy Delmarcado. Brody Alibisky. Caleb Gruber. Jolie Hacha. Lexi Hamish. Next, we have Nick Hamish. Hannah Costa. Sam Puwawas.
Congratulations.
Riley Lesinski. Kenley Mellon. Savannah Newbauer. Jackson Nenaver. Ava Norrie. Nolan Proct. Maya Pryor. Alex Rannow. AJ Richardson. Ava Sataba. Annabelle Stur. Dylan Taylor. Marissa Whitcomb. Lilian Wolfsteller. Nick Wolfsteller. Eva Fassi. Ben Beckers. Gerald Blood. Peter Bordeaux. Rachel Brockhaus. William Brockhaus. William Cahill. Adriana Fitzgerald. Taylor Gorinson. Nathan Hill. Ryan Morrisak. Austin Johnson. Travis Person. Wyatt Kobalzek. Adriana Mew. Gavin Mulherran. Owen Oswald. And Delaney Waxman. All right.
All right, well, let's, is there all one group?
There was a high school and middle school and elementary, but mostly it seems like high school's here. It's sort of in middle school. So, I have high school.
So, let's do a quick high school picture and then, and then we'll come to middle school. And then we just have two short groups to go after that. We have adapted bowling and golf afterwards. If you stick around, it won't take a super long time. So, let's add our high school. Ready for pictures? All right, let's give them a hand. All right, let's give them a hand. All right, let's, let's move into adapted bowling. Excited. I have my first opportunity to go and observe the state tournament this year and it was one of the most inspirational events I've ever had an opportunity to go to. So, Coach, you want to go ahead and share some words and then let's bring our athletes up?
So, we had a great season. We had five athletes make it to the state tournament. We had some athletes that made it in singles, some that made it in doubles, and some that actually made it, they qualified in both singles and doubles competition. So, yeah, they all did well. It's a really fun event down at the state tournament. Very uplifting experience to be a part of. So, we have three of our athletes here tonight. We have Marshall Heinon. Charles Miller. And Max Elwood.
So, your names are...
And then we had Cody Wilson and Anna Cavallier, who weren't able to be here tonight, but they also...
All right, you're going to have to come back up because we're going to do a picture. All right, congratulations. We only have one last activity to recognize, and that is our state golf tournament. Do we have any representatives here from golf?
Well, goodbye.
Goodbye. So, on behalf of the coach in their absence, I'd like to recognize Liam Duffner for qualifying for the AAA class golf tournament, which is a huge feat. And we know we always get a smaller tournament. People are busy on vacations and things. We do so appreciate you all coming and taking the time out of your schedules to come visit. You're always welcome to stay for the entire meeting, but we also know that most people likely will go. So, thank you for your presence and we will send all of the certificates to the folks that could make it in the mail. So, have a good evening. Thank you again.
Your boys are so funny though.
Yeah, I know. So serious.
Serious, yep.
All right, we will move on. There are no citizens comments. We'll move on to reports, board member committee reports. And we'll start with Eric Stramper. All right, Don?
Okay, I had community ed meeting, two long-range planning meetings, toured the Mora School policy meeting, the grand opening for Carter's weight room, end-of-the-year recognition at the high school. And then yesterday was the state trap tournament, which Princeton did very well at yesterday as well. So...
Jen?
The agenda planning and...
I attended the C general meeting and I did send the packet that had the summary of the legislative session from them. So, if you want, are interested, I took that. I attended the PE breakfast and graduation, which was awesome. Awesome, awesome. And the grand opening of the weight room, the Mora visit, that high school is amazing. So fun to see that new facility. Just, just excited about, I'm so excited for them, but maybe what the potential is in the future here and agenda planning. Eric?
Well, the breakfast, the grand opening, policy, and two long-range.
Just graduation. Welcome back. Thank you. We missed you. I had policy, community ed, toured the Mora Schools, which was beautiful. And then the end-of-the-year breakfast and graduation and policy. Okay, thank you.
Just a note, if you are interested in the MSBA Summer Leadership Conference, their early bird registration is due a week from Friday. So, it's a one-day conference in early, first week of August. It's on Monday. So, that's fit in all their stuff too, but just in case you hadn't taken a look at the early bird cutoff date. There's no student council report, superintendent report.
Thank you. Some of you may have seen this. I did send an email out, some sad news regarding bus driver for Palmer. Most people called him Pete. The real name Phillip Griswold and he drove the squirrel bus. He passed away this weekend in our hearts or with his family. And we're still waiting to hear details on arrangements. We'll send those out when we can. I'm sure I'll learn a little bit more because I'll be spent, I think tomorrow morning, I'll start my day at Palmer because they have a chamber networking event in the morning. So, we'll be there and likely learn some additional information. Along the line or theme of transportation, I want the Board to know that one of our goals throughout the summer is to really create a robust action plan with strategies on to, on how to improve the climate and the culture on buses and reduce the number of behavioral kinds of situations that unfortunately happen on buses. So, there's a number of things that we'll be working on. Michelle's taking a leadership role with Palmer. And it will be, you know, soup to nuts, just taking a look at everything. I have sent some inquiries to Palmer to see if there's any ability for them to have more additional training for drivers and staff development and those kinds of things. And then we'll be having some communications with families regarding some of the strategies that we're putting in place. So, what else is important for you to know? Lots of things. I'm a grandpa. I, yeah, I really appreciate your support and caring, you know, because it's a big deal for me. And certainly as, as your one true employee, it means a lot to me that you care. So, that's good. And they're both doing really healthy. On the building the grounds side of things, just so you know, we do have lots of projects going on. If you're over by the high school, you should know that parking lots tore up, which creates lots of different issues for us because the only entrance to get in and out of the building is in the back. And we have just a ton of activities going on in the summertime. So, it just changes the dynamics of everything at the high school. We are trying to work out some troubleshooting so that we can still try and get our private bathroom, so work completed before the beginning of the school year. We, like many other projects, are running into some supply chain issues. We, like many other projects, are running into some supply chain issue kinds of things. We're gonna try and push forward. There is a chance that we might have to start the year with one less bathroom or two less bathrooms to get the work done. I did walk the building and spend some time with those folks, and they, there was consensus that it felt like we would be fine with a couple less bathrooms, if that should happen. We have been having lots of correspondence with our long-range planning group on a number of things. One piece that we did work on this evening is we met with some potential developers on the land north of the middle school. They were really transparent with us on, you know, some of the issues that any builder would have to develop in the Princeton area and the costs associated with that, and trying to find some ways to partner with the city to potentially, you know, find a way that we can get some projects moving for the growth and prosperity of the Princeton area. So, I think that we've determined that we will be reaching out to discuss what we learned tonight with some of the city officials to, you know, see what options may be available. Some folks mentioned the Mora visit. I think that's really the last piece of the puzzle that we needed to be able to have old architects put together a proposal. I've been back and forth with Von. There's a chance July, if, at the July board meeting, to have something presented. If we did, it would be very big picture. He felt like he could have something very substantial by the August meeting. There's one last piece that he really wants to do, and he wants to meet with myself and new principal Ryan Jensen to walk the building one more time. And it's not just about any kind of square footage. It's about repurposing existing space that might be vacated in, you know, to the new square footage and how everything would flow together, you know, and what we need to consider. So, we're setting that meeting up, but we should have some viable options for the board to consider in August, for sure. And then, we would also have the elders running numbers on tax implications and those kinds of things as well. So, we would see what tax impact would be. So, a long laundry list of things with building the grounds that I could share more if you have questions on. Teaching and learning, you know, that curriculum work and designs continuing on. We are, you know, moving through some final stages of the purchases for the ELA programming in the intermediate school that's aligned with the science of reading and the letters training that all of our staff has gone through. So, now it's getting, starting to fall with the materials and resources and then getting our staff members trained. So, you know, in addition, we're doing lots of curriculum mapping in all departments across the district. And we're also doing lots of preparation for new teacher orientation and staff back-to-school week and the staff development and the pieces that we're gonna focus on to start the school year there. So, there's gonna be some, there's still some new hiring that we have to do. So, we're working through some of that. HR Director Senni is charged with that task. He's also working through some of the unemployment pieces and all of the different paperwork associated with going through that. The last I heard from him, we had approximately 60 applications. It probably has grown since then, I'm guessing. So, there's some, you know, work that's happening in that area as well.
60 applications for unemployment or for...?
Unemployment for our current employees, in our district, yes. I can talk about anything. But I do, I also know that we have a long agenda, and I'm happy to field any questions that you have, otherwise. You know, Michelle's gonna talk a lot about budget tonight. I'm not gonna touch that, right?
Can you just say it's good or bad?
She already tried that once.
She'll say it's complicated.
Next year will be complicated.
I just had one thought when you do the walkthrough with Von and Ryan. You know, in that old, defeated Von, there was a plaza that was out the back for the football field that had whatever. And I know that they're looking maybe at that tech wing to the south of that. I wonder if there's a way to talk about if that plaza could be somehow incorporated.
Like in between them?
Or, yeah, or whatever, so that people can go to the bathroom and there's the concessions and all of that. I know that everything that we asked him to do, the price goes up. But we also know that in phase two or three or whatever, the price would be more. And maybe, I just thought, if you look at that, is there some? I haven't...
Well, I would say that every conversation I've had with them in terms of new square footage would either be replacing where the pole shreds are and then maybe heading back towards the stadium in that direction. Or conversations about even going out that direction of the pack, if there's some green space over in that direction, too, and maybe that back parking lot, you know, some of those areas. But yes, I think that all should be considered. My hope and my intent, and if I'm just, let's say, magic wand, perfect world, would be they provide a draft of a proposal for a CTE area. You analyze the tax implications and feel like maybe there's some room to tackle some other projects that we have on the list, right? You know, that's class half-full mentality. Could be the opposite, too, right? But that's why we wanted to prioritize the CTE, see how much it would cost, what would the tax impact be. I think the only thing that I was given direction on from the board when we kind of went back to the drawing board is, you know, what would be a possible scaled-back version of what we had gone out for the last time, right? Let's start with CTE. And then, if it's good news, then we can, you know, there's a list pages long of other needs. So then, you know, we'd be prioritizing what are some of the other needs. And you hit a couple right there. I mean, we should have running plumbing out, you know, where our outdoor activities are. We should have a concession stand that's in compliance with food safety laws. You know, there's just some reasonable things that probably need to be tackled. Yep, and we'll get Ryan and Joe, our new hires, starting in July. So, try and, my hardest not to, you know, bug them too much, but, you know, they've been already doing plenty of work for us off clock. Okay.
All right.
Thanks.
All right, then we will move on to number seven. I'll entertain a motion to approve the agenda as presented. So, motion made by Melissa, is there a second? Second by Chad, is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye. Opposed, same sign, motion carries. So, we'll discuss and act on the previous four minutes from 5:16. I'll entertain a motion to approve those minutes. So moved. Motion made by Don, is there a second? Second by Chad, is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye. Opposed, same sign, motion carries. We'll move on to accept the consent agenda. Is there a motion to accept the consent agenda as presented? Motion made by Deb, second by Melissa, is there any discussion?
Yeah, I just wanted to point out that thanks to the whole organization, especially the lock crash was very successful. So, thank you, thank you. And then, as well as the weight room, that was another success, so.
Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye. Opposed, same sign, motion carries. So, let's see. Way down...
If you would indulge me, I think, is one of the next things that we need to watch this video?
I thought we were supposed to watch it.
I know. I asked you to, and then, we're being rule followers right now, because they asked us to watch it during the meeting.
Ben, I have the video queued up to screen share.
I was just calling you, Emily. Thank you. So, what do I do?
You don't have to do anything.
Okay, please start it.
Hope this works.
Emily, is there sound?
All about sportsmanship.
Ah, yeah, there is. You can't hear it, though?
No.
I did for a second. Yeah, right.
Let me play it and tell me again if you can hear it.
Coach is coach, issues are issues. That is the partnership that we're looking for. It's all around safety, it's all around sportsmanship, and it's all around having a great time in our facilities.
The Minnesota State High School League is a dynamic partnership of more than 600 schools, reaching all communities and corners of the state. Our mission is to provide educational opportunities in fine arts and athletics for all students. Everything we do is focused on supporting, growing, and improving our students' experiences through activities. As we move into a new school year, our ongoing work is focused on three main efforts. Our top priority is to promote and support safe, respectful, and inclusive environments for participation and competition. We want all of our high schools to provide activities and events that are free from discrimination, harassment, and marginalization. That's why the Minnesota State High School League recently led a collaborative effort of seven educational organizations across the state. Together, we make a difference with design to amplify the voices and advance the vision of our students. Ensure respectful and safe schools and environments.
After attending the conference, I really hope that as a small school, we're more inclusive and we include everybody, and that everybody gets to be involved and find what they enjoy. The quote-unquote was basically treating everybody with respect, the same respect you want to receive. Being kind, not like being rude to somebody because they are not from the same background as you, like ethnics, religion, be inclusive.
Okay.
It's important to feel safe, because within that, you're able to perform the way you want to and you're able to get the results you want to.
Yeah.
Emily? Due to, due to technical difficulties that we're having, we are going to call this good. And I do believe that all of our board or many of our board members have already watched this, and if they haven't, they will continue to do so. We did make an effort. We were just having a hard time hearing, and it was choppy.
Okay, got it.
Thank you.
Thank you, Emily.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, so we will move on to the continuous improvement plan goals, and there are some changes they're making in that plan.
Yeah, we'd like to have the board's support for these proposed changes. There's not many. Basically, it's the same one that we've had with some modifications that are being recommended. Our continuous improvement plan is really aligned and partnered with our governance model as a school district. And each of our big rock areas does have a district leadership team comprised of representatives from all of our sites. And then, each of our sites also has a, that same leadership team at their site. So, we have continuity and consistency. And the reason I bring that up is those members and team members go through this and give us feedback and suggested changes. They are small, but, you know, the first one is under climate and culture. Well, let me just first note that we feel so strongly that we're hitting the mark in student learning. We don't feel like it's something that we should change or modify. We feel strong there. We're getting some traction, so that is recommended that we keep that the same. Under climate and culture, we did add, created an environment where students, and then we'd added, and staff, because we think that's equally as important. Feel free, feel safe, respected in a sense of belonging and free of discrimination, racism. It's interesting, just a little bit, that we were able to hear from the video, some of the consistencies that we all have in the same way. Especially, we've all seen some of the stories from Minnesota State High School League and some of the difficult times that we've all had working through having everyone be respectful and feeling safe. This next one, we did add some language called student voice. Create continuity alignment across sites that, to ensure common language, student voice, and practices that promote a positive school climate. Really, what that is, is we want to be intentional in having this idea of, I don't want to say force, but requiring, same word probably, requiring each of our sites to have strategies in their action plans to get more student input and student voices, to be more deliberate, to try and get our students to participate, because ultimately, it is their school, and we need to find more ways to hear their voice for lots of different reasons.
That's great.
And one of the pieces, too, that we found is maybe our greatest area to leverage is the staff development that comes from hearing student voices, especially in this area of hearing from our student, having our staff hear from our students on what it's really like to be a student on a given day, what it's like to be in the hall, what it's like for a student, a non-white student, to, you know, live a day in our schools. What's that like, right? Some of our staff would think everything's fine, right? But then, until we start listening and hearing and understanding, we find that, no, there's, it's not all fine. So, that's why, you know, we want to try and be, bring in more student voice. And I think that's something that we should talk about to the board, to how do we continue to get more student voice in our school district. We did change what had been called the SEL Castle Standards to Habits of a Tiger. That's our own language that we Princetonized that. Down in the MTSS piece, where it says with fidelity, all we did is remove some parentheses. And then, we did add both academic and behavior on there. We moved the customer service piece to operations. Well, one, because we felt like that crossed the boundaries of all departments and all operational areas. And two, it just, being blunt, is we thought our climate and culture one was getting to be too much, too lengthy, too many bullets. So, we thought, let's put that down in operation. They're all like small things, but every one of these things, you know, we really did think through. So, we're, is this under information? Yeah, so I guess if you have input or thoughts or what have you between now and the next board meeting, we'd love to have them. Otherwise, we'd like to get your blessing to approve this for next school year. And then, we'll adjust our, you know, we use this everywhere in lots of our communications and things, so we would need to be changing those things.
Okay. So, number 10C and number 10D, the revised Fund VI budget and project update. And then, the budget summary is all you, I guess. There we go. The 2223 revised Fund VI budget recognizes the LTFM bond that we finalized in May. So, that's a chunk of change that got added of about 3.4 million. And then, we added, you know, some estimated expenses on the other side for that. As you know, we have to follow our school years, so our projects get split between June, July, and August. So, we always have this split, so it's kind of a guess. I have listed here, though, the projects that are in process somewhere along the line. The abatement projects, we have the high school front parking lot is in process, as Ben said, and is on time at this stage, so. And since we're not getting any rain, maybe it will stay on time, maybe. Student services, they're supposed to start tearing that up this week sometime, so that's in the process, too. The middle school parking lot, we're still, I think, finalizing design and pieces that need to go into that. And we are asking Omen for a... and pieces that need to go into that. And we are asking, uh, Omen for a, um, number for that parking lot because if it's under a certain amount, we can add it as a change order to the original contract. So that is what we're waiting for there. And then the LTFM projects, uh, we got the intermediate dish room. We are kind of in the same place with the high school bathrooms as, as that these, uh, projects needed a little bit of design. Um, and that has pushed us a little farther into the summer than we'd like to. So these projects might not be finishing until after school starts, um, but we'd like to get them done. Uh, the high school structural lift, as we call it, that's a, uh, a lift for the wrestling mats. That was taken down. That is going in. Um, the domestic hot water is actually completed. Uh, it did not survive, and wait until June. It literally crashed and burned when I was on medical leave. So we had to, uh, go ahead and get that rolling. Uh, the roofs, we are working on contracts. Uh, some of them may be done this summer, but others may not be done until, uh, especially the big science room area of the high school because, uh, of the timing of what McDowell has for projects this summer. It would be pushing us into the school year and, uh, keep that the smell from what that all takes would be a lot. So, um, and then of course, our HVAC stuff is, um, phased in and we have, um, POs out for those. And we will be working a little bit more. We've got adjusted quotes, but we've got to determine whether we're going to go up for bid for the ventilation or if we're going to run them as two separate projects we have. Um, so we'll do that the first part of July. As you can see, we've got two point three million dollars in LTFM. We received three point four million. Um, so we do have some prioritization yet to do on other projects and projects that weren't on the original list. So, uh, the high school is probably our biggest building and with the intermediate school next in line for, um, what needs to be done. So there will be more to come with this. But we have this under action, uh, because we do need to revise twenty-three. All right, then the budget summary. Uh, this is the typical, our new way of doing it so that we don't have so many attachments. Very first attachment is the whole budget. So I'm not going to go through that because each of these have their own area. Long-term facility maintenance in Fund One, um, includes the tennis court, which that project was approved. That question for yet. So I thought it was maybe just me, but I don't think it is. The, all the plan attached, we can't click on it. Good question. How do I? So Deb, when I gave you view on the one? I sent you a, I did request one, but I didn't do all of them. Okay, we're probably not going to be able to do that. Emily, can we cast this up on the screen?
Yeah. Yeah, I'll, I'll do that. Hang on.
Emily's like, I can do anything. Are you kidding me?
Yeah, because you're the head.
But I am the owner. I should have had somebody who.
Now I can open one of them.
Oh, you can, which one?
Yeah, because that's probably the one you requested. Yeah.
Well, we could all just send you a report.
Yeah, if you want us to do that.
Yeah, I know that would take us, take me a long time. Yeah, because I have to go through it. Okay, in the meantime.
Sorry, rain on the parade.
We'll get Emily to post that and I'll keep talking. So our estimated, we have a fund balance in LTFM at the end of twenty-two of one point three million, almost one point four. Um, the tennis courts is going to spend that down. We have estimated revenue coming in of six seventy-six. Uh, we typically have about a hundred and forty-five thousand in just our standard health and safety, uh, that we plan each year. Tennis courts, that project was actually, um, supposed to happen last year, but bids came in high, then we, um, re, redid the tennis courts and we are now doing them this summer. So about two-thirds of that's about three hundred and twenty-five thousand of the project. That's on there. And then just our normal, um, uh, district-wide maintenance costs that we do, we, we plug in about two hundred thousand dollars a year for things that, that need to be up, up kept like roofs. And there's always something in the HVAC world. It seems we do major projects, but we still have things that go wrong. So it's just our basic stuff with the tennis courts. Again, we will have a little bit more money there to work with. So we will be working on additional plan, uh, which we would have had, had I been here back in May, April and May, but I wasn't. So we'll just, we went down and plan a little later. How are we doing, Emily?
My Gmail crashed, so I just shared it with everybody on my phone. What the heck is happening here? But check your emails. It should be in there. Otherwise, Michelle, you could join the Zoom and screen share, but that's sometimes messy.
Did it open?
Yes. She put it in her PDA.
Yep.
Got it.
And it sent to everybody. But this is, what it is, is titled revised Fund, oh, oh, Six Budget. Is that the one you wanted?
Revised.
This is the one we already saw. This is the one we can open.
That was the only just one.
Emily, that's the one we just went through. We need to.
I'm sharing the other one right now.
She was hanging out and not paying attention. Just, I respect that.
Yep.
She usually doesn't have to.
I respect that a lot of it, you know?
Okay, just shared it.
Oh.
You're exhausted.
All right, now let me click on.
I see you all popping up.
Oh, you're doing that thing?
Oh, uh, it's.
It's still.
It's just the original, what?
We just want access.
Okay, request access.
Got to join things and.
Do that, Emily, quickly. Quick move.
Can you just share your screen, Michelle?
See, I think that's why you must have access. You all might say request, which I don't want to. Yeah, okay. So Emily, how do I get on Zoom? Send me the link.
We'll just stand behind Michelle.
We'll get it. Sorry about this.
All right, I'm, Michelle, I'm on Zoom, but.
Can you open the documents though?
Well, I probably have access to it. Is it just in my Google Drive?
When you click on that.
Recording in progress.
All right, Michelle, you share the document with me that you want up. And then I will put it right up there.
Teamwork.
I go into Google. Let me see if this works.
Do you have a board look like access or machine that we have that?
I didn't even actually look at it. The original budget explanation.
I know, it's the twenty.
I'll share with others.
It's a document, but in that it has the links.
Yep, I don't have access to it either.
No, what is going on?
I tried. I don't have access either.
Emily, you told me it worked. I'm attached. If I go to edit link, oh, that was a mistake. Okay. All right, Emily, you have to, um, it'd be on Zoom.
Yeah, I'll, I'll do that. Can you, uh, open your calendar up, please?
Yeah, I'm good listening.
Okay, done that? I clicked on that?
Yes. I did that right nine dot pro. I just thought it was going to be sent like during the meeting.
What? Why are you on tethered?
Question nothing well. Take your time, Michelle. Better.
Okay.
Enjoy it.
Okay, now go over. Okay, go to start screen.
There's a lot of stuff on here. That one?
This dude, yeah.
Okay, I'm sorry, but that is pretty funny.
Click on the one you want.
Like left, like right.
Another reason not to stand in front on graduation.
Being funnier in this part.
Okay, we see it up there?
That's insane.
Well, let us know how it works out for you. Hope you find, find me the next one.
I love it that Danielle's friend sent that to me.
Okay, we got her.
I love her sense of humor.
Okay, I deleted my LTFM off the document, so I can't put that one up right now, but let's go on to capital.
All right.
Um, the capital budget is, um, we, we have a little more revenue because a bond that, oh, we were paying has come off now. Um, and so, of course, though, we still don't quite have enough money. So buildings and grounds, uh, we need a, a plow truck. So we're estimating about ninety thousand. We haven't started really shopping. Uh, it's a ton and a half. And then, uh, other equipment, um, we typically had ten thousand there. We have moved it to twenty because you really can't buy anything anymore in that area when it breaks down for ten thousand, closer to twenty. Um, the, we, we, I put this under student services on here because that's where the nursing area is for the menstrual products. We get about seventy-one hundred. Uh, Mary E and I had a conversation about how that fits under capital, but that's where the funding is coming in from. So that's where it's got to go. Um, our technology budget has really not changed. A little bit extra for copier leases. Um, one-to-one students is the same staff in, infrastructure, classroom, thirty thousand, uh, software. And we moved from unassigned actually a number of years ago now, is now up to our estimate is about four hundred and eight thousand for the year. And we are still negotiating contracts. Um, Jessica's actually, uh, doing an awesome job of that. Uh, going to multi-year contracts, uh, telling them that, you know, their twenty percent increase just doesn't fit our budget. So we do have some movement in some of that area where hopefully it'll come down a little. How many softwares do you have?
Software, yeah.
Oh, I have no idea. We have pages. We have pages. Well, we have instructional and high school instructional. Each building has their own. Plus, we have instructional, then we have operational. So we have very, it's a lot of.
Chad, we, I mean, we can easily send you a spreadsheet with everything that we have if that's something.
Well, no, I'm just curious. I know, like in my world, one software application would be hundreds of thousands of dollars, but I was just wondering how many. If there's, if there's pages, then I'm good. I was just curious about.
Yeah, we have them ranging in price from, you know, a couple thousand dollars all the way to, you know, thirty, forty for the, you know, the bigger operational type stuff, you know?
Gotcha. Thank you.
Uh, the ninety-five thousand, uh, is actually allocated out to the buildings and then we have a little bit for emergencies that may come up. So this gives us a current year variance of a hundred and ninety-eight thousand. Um, we'll relook at this at, at, um, revised budget. We may make the recommendation to move two hundred thousand dollars of software back into, uh, the unassigned at that time. So, but for right now, we'll leave our structure as is and see how things look. So I don't delete things as I'm going backwards. So, um, staff development, we had a math coach reduction and a tech integrationist reduction of additional days. So the tech integrationist position is here in full, but we had like thirty additional days that have been decreased. Otherwise, our staff development plan is pretty similar to most years. As you see, we are estimating a variance of just two thousand dollars, um, after our expenses to our revenue. We do have some literacy pilot training materials, uh, that were put in this budget of sixty thousand that Jessica was working on. We do have an opportunity later on, I'm assuming in the school year, to ask for reimbursement for some of our curriculum that is related to literacy and some of our training. But we have no details on what that looks like, how it will work or anything yet. So but this budget is in line with, uh, what revenue is. QCOM is also relatively the same as past years. We bring in estimated revenue of about eight hundred and sixty-one thousand. We do have total expenses of, um, nine hundred and thirty-eight thousand. Um, but a lot of, a lot of years, we have not made our billing goals. So that usually leaves a little bit of money on the table. Uh, they have just changed the plan, they're telling me, so that, um, there might not be quite the ongoing money, um, from the goals piece where they, they say, end up saving that. The largest part here is they do pay for part of the tech integrationist and as that, um, fund balance goes down, we will need to look at what we need to do to bring this budget in line. But for this year, we, we have fund balance to carry it. Program initiatives. This is our teaching and learning budget, basically. Um, our big, uh, literacy pieces are in here. As Ben mentioned at the beginning of the meeting, the IS language arts adoption, um, is the piece, big piece of this. Have two hundred and seventy thousand dollars.
Do you mind just, I mean, just a couple of things?
Can I?
Just a couple.
Oh, add to the plus.
So, yeah, I, I think there's a point of information for the board, just to, um, reinforce the importance of us talking with legislators. Is it because of our, of course, is that because of our correspondence with the legislator that sponsored the reading bill, we were able to get a piece in there about retroactive reimbursement for what we've already purchased, which will come back to us, could be half a million dollars, I mean, I, it's gonna be out there, I don't know. At the C meeting, yep. And she listened, so we got it in there.
Yeah, we're just waiting for the rules of how that will actually work. We also have a middle school language arts pilot going on, Spanish materials, we have math in here. Our initial look at this, we had four hundred and seventy-eight thousand, we did bring this down to four hundred thousand as, if we spend into the current program initiative for this current year in twenty-three, if we end up needing to spend any of that money out, we would not have enough to cover four hundred and seventy-eight thousand. So we are being conservative here and making sure that we have enough funds to cover what we need.
Is the intermediate school language arts, that's the next step to the science of reading, right? For those primary.
Yeah, and as you can see, middle school is starting to pilot. So typically, when one building is.
So we're working our way, it falls, it is.
Yes, and we just also, which is not on here, but we are also working with preschool to get them, I forget what the name of the curriculum is, but it's to line up to go into the primary school, and that was over ten thousand dollars. That will be added to this list. Technology assigned, this is our, in kind of like our insurance program that we have, that parents can buy into. And then we pay for student Chromebook repairs out of this. And we also buy student cases because we do have a little bit of a fund balance, but eventually that will come to an end. I think we have one more year. We have one more year fund balance, and then we'll have to probably put the student cases back into capital. But this is the same budget as last year. Activity account. This is our students, raising money for student stuff for the most part. And we typically just put in revenue of five hundred thousand and student events of five hundred thousand. It's just a plug number, because we really don't know what their fundraising and what their expenses will be for the year.
Is there a way to look at it, it's true, I was just curious.
Yeah, I suppose we could, yeah.
I don't know if anybody else would.
But I think it all, like, it all matters on, like, number of students, are you in the activities? How much are the activity fees, and then how much fuel for classes and all that, so it's a fluctuation.
Yeah, in some years, they don't run as many things as other years. Yeah. This is Fund Nineteen. We have estimated that we will have about, so Fund Nineteen is just above the unassigned category here. We have an estimated one point six million in revenue that we have coming in for next school year. One point two million of it is ESER two and will be used for ongoing expenses, in which we basically have a million of that allocated from this year, and then we'll have salary increases on top of that, so it'll probably be about one point one million. The other money that we have left is ESER three, which is just for, it's for summer school. It's where we got our literacy training paid for out of, mental health can go in there. It's very finite, very, very narrow in what we can spend that money on. So we will be, we have, of course, summer school, mental health, and the literacy training, but we will have some additional dollars that we will be figuring out what to do with here in the next couple months to spend that out for the year. And then that will end all of our COVID money at the end of this, this year. Or next year, we're still in this year. So, as we, we get things in September, when we know where we're gonna allocate, we'll give you a summary sheet of what Fund Nineteen will look like, because we don't even have the ability to put in a budget yet at the state for Fund Nineteen because of, we gotta close out twenty-three before we get access to twenty-four. Then here's the big pieces. I, the unassigned category, the adjustments, I believe, have all gone through the board. Jason did all of the required documentation that we need to do at the level. But here is just a quick summary of what those adjustments were that impacted our current year budget. In the end, they totaled about six hundred thousand. And again, we'll bring up the unassigned. We did have some larger increases, insurances, both workers' comp, property and liability, we had some bigger increases. We had bigger increases in severance because we had some people repair that are still, still in the old severance pieces for health insurance and those pieces, so there were quite a few adds. We do have the update of the four percent. We do have, um, basic skills funding. We did put in the special ed cross subsidy of one point four. What is not in this budget for revenue is special ed, our regular special ed. We did some work during the school year of switching some of our expenses that we were doing for federal. We switched them to state, and we are using federal funds and special ed to pay for tuition bills. The theory is, is that we'll up our regular special ed. We will not see our first runs until August. So there is no increase, and I am expecting an increase. So at revised budget, we should have, I'm hoping, good news in that area. We do also do not have the student support money in, nor the Indian Ed increases that we were, because those are gonna be ran more like grants. We did put in the library aid, as that can be supplanted, and they made it very clear that we, we could could use our current library, librarians and media people in that area, so that one we did add. Overall, we look really good. We got thirty-nine million in revenue coming in, we got thirty, just, thirty-nine million, three hundred going out, estimated right now with a variance of two hundred and ninety-eight thousand. In our world, that is flat. So I am, if our enrollment holds and comes in, we have good news at revised budget time with special education. I expect that we will see some additional ongoing money that we haven't allocated that will help us in twenty-four, twenty-five, because that isn't going away. Twenty-four, twenty-five, we still have a three million dollar hole. So in July, we'll start talking about what that looks like, I'll run these numbers. And we only got two percent coming in from the state for twenty-four, twenty-five, so. And our expenses with the one-time money all coming off, which is really the one point one million is what we will have to deal with there. And then salary increases will all have an impact on twenty-four, twenty-five. But for a moment, we can breathe, pretty good, pretty happy. So if we, we can just get our expenses so they just don't keep going up. Then we got food service. And this is just a line on the original at the very top. We got a fund balance of two point one million there. We only took out of this budget really the fees for credit cards that we pay because we're going to free lunch and free breakfast for all. So that was really the revenue, it's hard to tell where we're gonna end up. If we're gonna have more students eating because of free, and what our reimbursements will look like there. Estimated expenditures, we do have about a hundred and fifty thousand dollars in equipment planned in there. Part of that is the IS dish room, the middle school dish room, and some melt coolers. We will be looking at other equipment as we go through, we do need to spend down that two point one million to bring that in line with statute. But we're not the only school that has, had, during the pandemic, saw their food service fund balance go up. So they did give us some leeway there for a short period of time to carry these bigger balances. But they'll eventually go back. Fund four, also looking very well. There's an addition of a secretary in here. Childcare is doing very well, and also our preschool, we, they are doing a really good job of making sure that we are getting paid and that the prices that we are charging and what we're paying for labor is, is working a little bit better, so. We're expecting a positive variance in community at next year at this point, and now as we review year-end, where we are, we're not at year-end, but where we were in June for the end of May, you could really see the difference in childcare has just exploded, you know, for revenue kind of thing. The one thing that will be coming off of the community ed is the grant that you've been seeing every month for the childcare workers, so their extra money will not be coming in anymore. That means, so we're in good shape there also. The building construction fund. What did I do here? Uh, that is, uh, did I do a different doc? This is the same list that you saw. This is the plan, yeah, go back up to the top. So the full original budget, I'll talk about the last two here. As you can see, the building fund, we got a little bit of revenue which will be interest. We basically left what we already have received, like, for this year for interest, so we should receive about that much at least for next year. And then just the expenses, because we've already recognized all of the revenue in current year, so the goal and fund balance at the end of twenty-three. And then, of course, debt services are postpayment. So overall, the twenty-three, twenty-four budget is looking pretty good at this point. Any questions? And I'll get the links fixed so that they work, because I have no idea what's wrong at the moment.
So I just have a point of information, and I'd like to just put it in your brain to recall back in a year from now or so, is, in a certain relation to the community ed budget, and Michelle alluded to the fact that we're doing quite a bit better in that budget than we had in previous years. And when we were, when our revenue wasn't high, or if it went, when it went down, we needed to reduce expenditures over the year, years, and we, you know, reduced quite a bit of staff over the years. And because that is a self-sustaining fund, there will be a point, and I would, would support this a hundred percent, when we continue to build that revenue up, start increasing the staff to where I believe it should be, because we are a little bit short-staffed in there, comparatively speaking, to other districts, and that is something where, if we do have more staff, we believe that we can even increase more revenue and have more programming, so those kinds of things, so. It's just something to keep an eye on, that, you know, that might be one area that we actually could increase, you know, staffing versus decrease, depending on if these projections hold true or not.
Are there any other questions of Ben or Michelle? We'll move on to tiered start times.
This is just a point of information as well. I think I did send an email with you to share that there was a meeting brokered between me and several of the middle school staff regarding concerns that they had with the, the number of times where our students were missing class time due to early releases. And I believe some of you have brought this up to me in the past, too, I feel like Eric Strandberg has mentioned this concern to me in the past as well, and, and we have it, the concerns are coming from a couple areas. One is the students being released, seventh period or sixth period, and of course, it's, the spring is always the worst, but it's not only the spring, there is sometimes in the winter times and those kinds of things as well. So students are missing classes, and then the teachers, who are coaches, miss quite a bit of classes. So even when we have students in that, that aren't even in activities, they're having, they're not having their regular teacher with them. And what, so that's something that they've asked me to reconsider in, in terms of, you know, possibly switching, to have the secondary students start first and get out at two-ish, or a little after two, and then the younger students starting at eight forty-five and not getting out until three fifteen or so. I felt like that would, that huge of a change would be something that we couldn't even consider for this fall. There's just too many moving parts and pieces to pull that off. But I, I am to a point where I feel like it deserves more analysis, and with your support, I would like to be able to use next school year as a, a full analysis, including the community and parents to get, to do lots of surveys and focus groups if needed, and then some of those things to take a look at the pros and the cons.
I think if you just look at, look at the sporty, look at the activities, doesn't necessarily have to be sports, but, like, my daughter, for swimming in the fall, she'll get out every Tuesday and Thursday at two o'clock.
Track was bad.
Track's bad, basketball, I coached ninth grade boys' basketball, we have four o'clock games every single Monday, Thursday, and Friday, my own game, we're out of school at two o'clock.
And track's a.
Girls' hockey, it's all really too good to travel.
Yeah, it's, it's something I think that we should at least look at and explore.
You know, when we first looked at it and the pros and cons, and of course, you could argue, any of us, anyone could argue both sides of this.
Right.
I think we leaned on a lot of the sleep study research with adolescents, and that tended to be kind of the more. and that tended to be kind of the more trendy thing to do in schools where the older students started later. And that's kind of where we fell, so, I, I mean, it's, it's really the, to see if the argument of the kids missing as much class and, and then having a different teacher at the end of the day, if that outweighs any rationale of the sleep study research. And of course, I know even bringing this topic up will just, you know, could, won't be controversial, right? Because it's something that everyone will have an opinion on and it will be an emotional response, right? On all different directions here.
I do know there will be a handful of parents with kids that are older and younger that will be much happier if their older kids are done sooner, because it's easier for their work schedules.
Yeah, I would anticipate that there will be happy people, there will be angry people, there will be sad people. And I just, I, I'm asking for your support to, to, and, and be real transparent and tell parents at the beginning in the fall here that this is something that we're analyzing and kind of share some of the reasons and ask for their participation and input throughout the process and use next year to where either, I don't know, sometime in the spring, we're bringing a recommendation to the board for you to consider, either just staying the same or potentially changing. So then, we have that in time for everybody to do their planning for handbooks and schedules and all business in the spring, in that preparation for the next fall. So that's really all I have, I just wanted to share that with you.
Are you gonna document, like, all those teachers that are out of classroom and then students are out of the classroom?
Yeah, that would be part of the analysis, and I'll tell you that the middle school teachers already did a pretty good job of that. When they, when they met with me, they gave me, I don't know, about a five-page document. They were very prepared, very professional.
Which teachers meant, like, it was a?
It was middle, it was middle school teachers.
There's a lot of middle school coaches.
Mostly all coached or had some connection. And I bet there was about twelve to fifteen, I mean, it was a large group.
And I know how that played into kids' schedule, because I kept hearing kids saying, we had a sub, we had a sub. That also creates anxiety for those kids, because they're not getting regular instructions, they could not get into Tiger Tune Up because they had a sub, because they could not meet with their regular teacher, so it was a domino effect.
Yeah, you know, sadly, even if we were hypothetically to make this change, students still may be getting out early, especially, I mean, it really depends on the variables and the dynamics of the season. Because this last season, we had, we were so behind. We were starting tennis matches, doing tries and quads and starting those at one in the afternoon.
The nice thing about the potential of even exploring a change is that it aligns, I think it aligns more with Mississippi aid schools, because there, a lot of those schools are on that earlier start time.
I think that it's, would be a great idea to let parents know that, hey, this is what we're looking at.
Yeah, for sure.
Yeah, my intent would be to start with communication right at the beginning of the year and then let that play out, and I'll give you regular updates.
If you recall, when we made that decision, that the primary wanted to get the bulk of their day in before lunch and that, and that schedule allowed that, so that would be a con, if they can't do it.
Oh, yeah, I mean, if, if, I'm sure that when we talk to, to elementary teachers, really focusing on literacy and they'll, most of them will tell you that the best learning starts at the beginning of the day.
So it'll affect those kids too, but, well, let's just start them all at one, we've got enough buses, we got enough input, right?
You know, that's always something to consider. So I mean, I, I'm not hearing any strong opposition for us to not explore this, so I'm gonna take that as. All right, thank you, that's all I have.
Let's move on to the action. Eleven A, I'll entertain a motion for the resolution for termination, elimination, reduction of positions.
Do I need to say the whole thing there, or do I just say, I move? No, I move.
Motion made by Melissa, is there a second? Second by Chad, is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye. Opposed, same sign, motion carries. Eleven B is the second reading of policy, I entertain a motion to approve the second reading of policy. So motion made by Deb, is there a second?
A second.
Melissa, the second, is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye. Opposed, same sign, motion carries. We'll move on to the certification of updated district population estimates. I'll entertain a motion to accept the new population estimate. Motion made by Chad, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Don, is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye. Opposed, same sign, motion carries. We'll move along, on to eleven D, the twenty-twenty-two revised budget, I'll entertain a motion to accept the twenty-twenty-three budget as presented. So moved, motion made by Deb, is there a second? Second by Chad, is there any discussion? Hearing none, we will vote by roll call, starting with Don.
Yes.
Chad?
Yes.
Sue, yes? Eric?
Yes.
Yeah, yeah.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes.
Yeah, motion carries. We'll move on to the budget summary, entertain a motion to accept the twenty-three, twenty-four budget as presented. Motion by Eric Strandberg, is there a second? By Melissa, is there any discussion? Hearing none, we will vote by roll call, starting with Deb, yes? Eric Minks?
Yes.
Sue, yes?
Yes.
Chad, yes, Deb, you're done?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes?
Yes.
Motion carries. There were no additions to the agenda, the future meetings are listed. I will now entertain a motion to close the meeting to discuss superintendent evaluation.
So moved.
Motion made by Don, is there a second? Second by Chad. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye. Opposed, same sign, we are now in closed session.
Emily, can you hear me? Emily?
Yep, I'm here, sorry.